Good evening and welcome to the East Hampton City Council meeting for Wednesday, August 5, 2020. The meeting tonight is being recorded and broadcast live via East Hampton Media on Charter Channel 193 and livestreamed on East Hampton Media's YouTube channel. Our thanks as always to East Hampton Media for their assistance in broadcasting this meeting. Their team is outstanding and their assistance has been invaluable. All councilors and participants in this meeting are gathered remotely via Zoom conference application. Remote public meetings during the COVID-19 pandemic are the result of an executive order by Governor Baker on March 12, 2020, allowing us to do so. For those who are attending this meeting for the public speak portion of the agenda, please remember that this is your turn to speak, so the council will be listening but not responding to your comments. We ask that you remain respectful and direct your comments only to the city councilors. If you would like to speak, use the Raise Your Hand feature by selecting the Participants option at the bottom of your screen, then click Raise Hand at the bottom of the Participants window. If you are dialing in via phone only, you can raise your hand by pressing *9. Please remain on mute until called, at which point you can unmute your connection and begin your comment. Before commenting, state your name and your street or town if it is not East Hampton. If you find that your internet connection is slow, please remove the video portion. You will have three minutes to make your comments. If the time runs out, you may finish the sentence that you were speaking at the time. I remind both the members of the city council and the public to remain on mute until you are recognized by the chair, that is me. This meeting is now called to order. Barbara, can you please take the roll call?
Meg Coniff, here. Salem Derby.
President.
Mo Mar Gomez.
Here.
JP Kuzinski.
Here.
Bill Lynch.
Here.
Mont Peak.
Here.
Dan Rist.
Here.
Lindsay Rothschild.
Here.
Melon Zerrin.
All right, we will now stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice. Thank you. We have no minutes this evening to approve, so we can go right into public speak. A reminder to those who are doing public speak, we have a public hearing at 6:15, so if we don't get through all of you, we will get back to you after the public hearing has concluded. So at this time, we have some folks with their hands raised. I will start with Kay Collins.
Thank you so much, Councilor Coniff. Whoop, there with me one sec. Sorry about that. I know you like that picture, so. Hi, everybody. So thank you so much for hearing me. My name is Kay Collins. I live at 4 Carolav in East Hampton. And I know I emailed some of you about some concerns that I have with the appointment of Kathy Gray to the Community Relations Commission. I just want to be very clear that this is not about cancel culture. I also welcome a diverse slate of opinions. My main concern is with the fact that the Community Relations Commission was formed because the Department of Justice's Civil Rights Arm had to come into the community and do a visioning session, and that was a result of racist things that happened at the high school. So, you know, there was clearly a history of its incidence in our community, and the Community Relations Commission was formed specifically to adjust that and to bring people together and to be a space for people to express their concerns. Some of you were in the last meeting where Kathy addressed the council, and one of the things that she said was that she intended to have more of a procedural role and less of a political role on the Community Relations Commission. But I think that that's disingenuous to say that you can separate a person who has an online persona, a public online persona that is deliberately divisive, and a person who's working with a committee in any capacity, that's something that's supposed to bring the community together. I don't think you can separate those two things. I know that I emailed some of you with articles and posts that used very inflammatory language, and I think that based on publicly available information that I read, being divisive is something of a hobby perhaps for Ms. Gray, or something that she seems to get a lot out of. And, you know, comparing protesters to Baby Gestapo, inferring that people that were protesting were not actual black people. I am not a person of color, and that was deeply insulting because the people that were at that protest are people that I respect greatly, and I just don't think that that is the kind of language that we want from somebody who's going to be trying to bring the community together. I also question the wisdom and the judgment of publishing an article like the one in the Gazette while your Community Relations Commission appointment is pending. So I just wanted to take a moment and to express my grave concerns about that appointment and ask you to not move forward with that. Thank you.
Thank you. We have next up Liz Perry.
I actually would like to speak about the appointment of Jason Montgomery. I have been acquainted with Jason Montgomery. I'm sorry, my name is Liz Perry, Liz Jensen, legally. I live on Goss Street. Jason Montgomery on the CRC. I have known him, I've been acquainted with him for a couple of years. I thought to know him better these past two months. His commitment to diversity and racial justice is inspiring. He is well-versed in community outreach. He is a voice that I feel will help the CRC reach its full potential to oversee positive, progressive change and diversity within East Hampton, and I encourage you all to vote in favor of having him sit on the CRC.
Thank you, Liz. Laura.
Hi, my name is Laura Britton. I live on Ridgewood Terrace in East Hampton. I'm here to speak in opposition to the appointment of Kathy Gray to the CRC. I don't have to go over all the reasons that were previously stated, the fact that she believes that white genocide is imminent, the fact that she compared the Black Lives Matter movement to Nazis, or that she frankly somehow refers to black people as a monolith. I do want to point out that Counselor Kuzinski, who's my counselor, had said that there is oftentimes a need for differing opinions, which I agree with. I don't think that anyone should silo themselves in a bubble, but there's a difference between differing opinions and the belief that you can dictate who is an actual black person and who is not. I also want to say that Kathy, in the previous meeting, said that issues come, issues go, but the issue of white supremacy is not going anywhere, and it's going to be an issue for a very long time in this country, in this state, and in this community. Given that Aeneas Not Enough was asked to work directly with the CRC, I'm also confused as to why Kathy is being considered because she has been publicly against Aeneas Not Enough, both in her opinion piece and in Facebook comments. And I also just, I just want to throw a correction out there because I keep seeing this happen. I am here in my capacity as a resident of East Hampton, not in my capacity as an organizer for Jobs with Justice, Massachusetts Jobs with Justice, but I will say Kathy continues to harass the Pioneer Valley Worker Center because she thinks that the Pioneer Valley Worker Center helped organize the Aeneas Not Enough rally, which is not true. It was Massachusetts Jobs with Justice. So, you know, she published clearly unchecked facts in her opinion piece. It's very frustrating for me as an organizer for Mass Jobs with Justice. So I will just close by saying that Kathy Gray does not believe in the values of the CRC and in fact embodies what the CRC was put in place to address, and I think it would be irresponsible to put her on that committee. Thank you.
Thank you, Laura. Next up is Eric Houlon.
Thank you, President Coniff. I thank you for recognizing me. I have to do question, though, your judgment of scheduling this meeting at the same time as the Bruins playoff game, but we will. I'm here to speak on behalf of the appointment of Jason Montgomery to CRC. I've known Jason for a couple of years now. We met through our, we're both very active in the community arts scene. He is a kind of individual who is always willing to roll up his sleeves and do the difficult work. I think he provides a great perspective. I think he'd be a tremendous asset to the CRC. I believe that he's done a lot of work, not just in the arts community, but also with helping small businesses during the time of the pandemic. I think he'd be a terrific addition. I'd also like to circle back to one thing that was stated in the earlier meeting today regarding the appointment of Kathy Gray. A question was brought up by Counselor Rothschild regarding whether or not Kathy Gray, who represents herself as a journalist, is actually a journalist. Counselor Rothschild said that she was unable to find anything written by Ms. Gray. Ms. Gray responded by saying that her articles are only available in libraries and not available via Google. Speaking as a professional librarian of 20 years and professor of library and information science for the last 10 years, who has done a little bit of research on this, I am also not able to find any articles that are written by this Kathy Gray individual. So if there are databases or resources or library-related materials that I am not aware of, I would really like to be made aware of them to help my own professional development. So I think there is some question whether or not this individual is who she is claiming to be. I will move along now. Thank you for your time.
Thanks, Eric. Next up, we have Carolyn Cushing.
Hello, this is Carolyn. I am speaking to appointments, a couple of points, just to support Cindy Mojica's appointment to the ECA. I work with the ECA, and I know that she is very busy and would really be lucky to have her connected to the arts and bringing her expertise and working with the high school and things like that. So we're lucky to have that. And always lucky to have Barbara Lombard to be the clerk. I too am really, I'm concerned and confused about Kathy Gray being in line to be appointed to the CRC. I know her just from these couple of articles in the Gazette and comments, and people have kind of covered those points. I was just in the last meeting where we talked about the CRC, about developing positive relations between the different people and people with different opinions in our community. And she said, you know, it's Aiken, Aeneas Not Enough, and MAGA. Like, she kind of set them up as a continuum and against each other, which to me is feeding that kind of divisiveness and putting us in camps where we don't cross and talk to each other, have interactions, be afraid of each other. I have, you know, my own particular opinions and thinking that addressing racism and doing it within our systems within the city is super important. I would be happy, I'd welcome talking to people who have different opinions. I was on a school committee meeting. I think it'd be great if there was dialogue between those who are supporting the SROs and those of us who are worried about a police presence not serving our young people, our young people of color. That's where we should have dialogue. I don't think, like, we all, we can't talk to each other across those divides. And just in that last meeting, those comments that I heard her saying, setting us up in those divides and adding to the separation and difficulty in speaking together. And, oh, final point on appointments, I wasn't clear, I'm not really clear if Jason Montgomery is on the agenda, but I worked with Jason a lot in the arts community, and he works hard. He shows up. He brings creative work and strategic work. He knows a lot about different systems, how organizations run. He is very passionate. I mean, he's a poet. He was part of my poetry project. He's a poet. He's very passionate. I think sometimes when he's very passionate, some of us, you know, like, we come from different cultures, we don't always like, oh, my gosh, someone who is acting in different ways from me.
I'm going to have to cut you off.
Oh, I'm sorry. That's it. Yes, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next up, we have Louise Jacob. Louise?
Okay. Yeah, thanks. Sorry, I can't seem to get video back on, and I will admit I was unprepared for this. I thought there was going to be a full discussion at the Appointments Committee. I'm one of those who received, had my attention drawn to a few of the articles by Kathy Gray, came across a few more. Two things. I think there is some question about, I mean, Eric said the librarian. I formerly worked as a journalist many years ago in London. I don't want to talk about how many continents I worked on or anything that's irrelevant. But the first one is, I would like to, at the very least, see this proposed appointment given more due diligence, which I think is necessary in this case. It wasn't something I wanted to say in front of a council meeting because you're talking about an individual, but if it's going straight to the council vote tonight, I will say that. Second, in terms of different, I know I'm going to cut off. Okay, in terms of different opinions, absolutely. And I mostly interact on Facebook because I have limited mobility, so, I mean, in a way Zoom and all has worked for me personally. But given that, I have talked with and argued with quite a lot of what you call old timers in East Hampton. They know police officers personally. They went to school with them. They don't understand the different experiences of people of different races, a lot of things here. And I think if you want to broaden the discussion within the CRC, yes, you need to somehow pull in more voices. But the nomination proposed tonight is very divisive. It's somebody who's equating kids pulling down statues with white genocide, and again, if I'd known this was coming up, I recognize those catchphrases, but haven't had time to do all the presentation worth this. I also didn't even have an opportunity to contact my own counselor. Hi, Tom, because I'm not very good at the emails and, okay, I'll leave that there. And I would ask you to, there's been so much concern about this, I would ask you at the least best just say this is the wrong person, the right person, the wrong person for the right, whatever. I feel like quoting Michelle right now, but I can't remember. But I'd make one other point that if you're also considering Jason, I also think, sorry, very quickly.
I'm sorry, Louise, your three minutes is up. I apologize.
Okay, Pat, can I just finish this?
Finish one sentence, Louise. One sentence.
Okay, sure. I think there's, we need to have more representatives than one person of color and on the CRC as well because it's very hard to be the token, and I experienced that as a woman 40 and 50 years ago in lots of meetings. And I'm just asking you for that one. Bring that to the mix.
Thank you very much, Louise. All right. So, hi, Gabby. Let's see. We are about five minutes late to start a public hearing. Can you hang around, Gabby? Or I can give you a couple of minutes right now if.
Whoa. Yeah, a couple of minutes is all I need.
Meg, if you're.
Hi, I'm Gabby Stevenson. Oh, sorry.
No, go ahead.
Okay. Hi, I'm Gabby Stevenson. I live at 68 Parsons Street, and I just wanted to give a couple of words about the appointment of Kathy Gray, which I encourage everyone to vote no. And I think I just want to point out that it's not just this editorial that she wrote out that is problematic, but it's a history of her espousing these racist, white supremacist vantage points throughout her Facebook history. And it's not just in her own personal Facebook page, but she also espouses these on other pages, on people's personal pages. So I encourage the councilors to also go into her Facebook account and to search for a lot of the comments that she made, especially disparaging towards Black Lives Matter and, you know, encouraging police brutality against black and brown peoples. So all of these things that make this not a safe environment for people of color, Kathy is a proponent of, and she is very vocal about it, and it's someone that does not fall in line with the mission statement of this Community Relations Committee. Thank you.
Thanks, Gabby. Okay. I don't see any other hands up, so at this time I will take a motion to open the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion? Public hearing is open. Is this item Salem? This is your item, is it not?
What point of order? You didn't vote, Greg.
You're correct.
Wow. Okay, we got a vote?
JP Kuzinski, aye.
Go ahead, Barb.
Meg Coniff.
Aye.
Salem Derby.
Aye.
Mo Mar Gomez.
Aye.
JP Kuzinski.
Aye.
Bill Lynch.
Yes.
Mont Peak.
Aye.
Dan Rist.
Aye.
Lindsay Rothschild.
Aye.
All right, motion passes. Public hearing is open. Counselor Derby.
Thank you, Madam President. So what we have tonight is something that was brought to us by the Planning Department, and this is a change to the table of uses, basically, that would streamline the process for some businesses in our downtown business district to be able to move into an existing building if they're not going to be doing a lot of alterations in a more streamlined way. And we did have a joint public hearing with the Planning Board. We do have the recommendation, and we did vote to recommend this three to zero, but I think at this point it makes sense to turn it over to Jeff to give a more detailed explanation.
Good evening. Is that okay, Madam Chair?
Absolutely.
Great, thank you. I'm Jeff Bagham, the city planner. I think Counselor Derby did a great job introducing this. This material is in the packet for August 5. Sorry for anyone who wanted to have access to it. It's in the previous packet. The Planning Board and ordinance met twice, at least once, if not twice, but on July 28, the Planning Board voted unanimously to recommend this to council. So, you know, the idea of this, and I don't know if it's important to share a screen and show any of the information, but there's a memo that outlines what this is going to do in the zoning ordinance, and really it adds a footnote into the zoning ordinance that will apply to uses in the downtown business district that are already plan approval, which is a fair number of uses are already considered plan approval in the zoning. And, you know, it's just important to make a distinction between plan approval and special permit. So plan approval in zoning world means that the use is sort of normal and expected and that the Planning Board has kind of a more limited role in looking at projects that are plan approval. They can talk about certain things about a project, but, you know, the opportunity to really deny it, like a special permit could be denied, is really not there. So it's normal and expected. And the language that is put forward is that, basically saying that no plan approval is required when there are not substantial changes to the exterior of a building. We do account for signs. Signs are okay. Things for accessibility, so Americans with Disabilities Act improvements, which in some cases can change the exterior of a building, to build a ramp, sometimes railings, you know, those are already exempt. So we wanted to be clear that that was, you know, something that's just going to be allowed. And then, you know, things that are minor, and we had a couple of examples in the packets and the materials that had previously been utilized by the Planning Board and ordinance. Not to single any specific business out, but in the downtown business, the Poke Bowl is a good example of a restaurant that took over a space, and they made a couple of minor changes to the exterior, added a sign, but what they had to do was they had to go through the Planning Board process, which takes, it takes about two months, and the fees for a project like that were in the range of $400. So one of the key things that we're trying to do is remove some barriers to get new businesses in existing buildings. You know, this is something that's considered good planning practice, you know, to try to remove hurdles or barriers for new development, but part of what is just seemingly a reality is the impact of COVID-19 is really starting to show, reveal itself a little bit. And since we've kind of initiated this process, a couple other storefronts have become vacant. So it's a troubling pattern, and we are doing things to try to help support existing businesses. We've got grants, we've got funding, we're trying to do whatever we can to help existing businesses. So it's really unfortunate if they do leave and close, but this is in response to these vacant spaces and making it easier for them to become reoccupied. So I don't know, Madam President, how important it is for me to go through the table of uses or the other information that's been provided, but I do know there's a couple of people who might want to speak to this, and I'm happy to handle this however you think it might be.
So what I'll do is I'll ask the council. Council, do you need to have a walkthrough of the table of uses, which I think we got before, but.
I have it available if not.
Want to see again? Not, yes, no? I'm seeing, looks like no. No? No. So I guess we're good, Jeff. I know that there were other people who wanted to speak on this, so if you want to have them, go ahead and, if you are aware, if you have anyone.
Yes, I believe that there's the Chair of the EDIC, the Economic Development Industrial Commission, and possibly Chuck Connor from Taylor Real Estate. Those are the two people I'm aware of that might speak. I don't know. I can see Gwen, Gwen is on the call.
Okay, Gwen, do you want to make a comment regarding this?
Please, thank you so much. I'm Gwen Morrissey. I live on Mayor Street. I'm the Chair of the East Hampton Economic Development and Industrial Commission. Another of the EDIC members, Mo Beliveau, is also joining us tonight and may wish to speak on this topic. EDIC's mission is to support and enhance the economic environment for current and future businesses, residents, and the East Hampton community at large. And I think our major support for this amendment comes from the fact that we know that this is not the fix in extraordinarily complex and difficult time for lots of businesses all across the city, but that any piece of low-hanging fruit that you can address, any hurdle that you can make lower to reduce the risk of trying to open a business in this time is valuable and to the benefit of our community in the long term. So thanks for hearing that. And Mr. Connor and Mo, I welcome your thoughts to join the choir as well.
Either Mo Beliveau or Mr. Connor, do you want to speak? We'll start with Mr. Connor.
Yes, thanks for having me. And I'm Chuck Connor. I'm a resident of East Hampton, the owner of Taylor Real Estate, and I was involved with the original draft of the current zoning bylaw, but as any document, you know, changes should be made as time goes on, and I think this is a change that will benefit small business, and it's probably something that I know has been talked about even prior to COVID, but particularly with the current situation with the pandemic, the kind of hardship of having not as much of fees, but a two-month delay for somebody to move into a space in town that is not being changed for use and it's allowed use in the zoning is not needed. So I'm in full support of this. It's a great idea.
Thank you. Mo, did you want to speak? You are unmuted, Mo.
Yeah, thank you. Yes, I wanted to, my name is Mo Beliveau. I am a resident of East Hampton. I'm also the Executive Director for the East Hampton Chamber of Commerce and a member of the EDIC, and I wanted to express my support for the chamber's support and my support for the EDIC's. for the EDIC's effort in bringing this, um, this, um, voice tonight. And anything that we can do to reduce barriers, uh, especially during this time, is, is really a, a, a great thing to be doing. Um, I think anyone who has decided to move forward with starting a business, especially during this time, um, really needs to be supported and anything that we can do to make that happen is, is a really good thing. So I wouldn't, I would urge, um, the vote to move this forward.
Thank you, Mo. Counselor Derby?
So, uh, yeah, I'm happy to, um, entertain questions, um, from the counselors, uh, and, and then we can open it up to the public. Uh, I would just say, you know, one, one thing real quick. This is about time and, and about money, which are two critical things if you want to open a business. Um, and, and it's, it's not just the fees that, uh, an applicant would have to pay to the city, but it's also the advertising, um, in order to advertise the, the meeting, which is expensive. So, um, but I'm happy to entertain questions from. It's like Dan has his.
Counselor Rest?
Yes, for the public's sake and for mine, was this, did this get full approval by the planning board and by the ordinance committee?
Yes. Both bodies fully approve this.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Counselor Kuzinski?
Thank you. Just a quick question. I, I heard, uh, from, uh, Mr. Connor that this does not affect, that any uses that could already go into effect in this spot, any, any given spot would still be allowed. So I'm not quite clear why we would need to have a long, an elongated process. And I wanted to confirm the fact that if a use is currently allowed, it could continue or adapt to a new use that is allowed, that we're not adding uses or subtracting uses. Is that correct? City Planner Bag?
Yeah. I, um, I appreciated, uh, Mr. Connor's note. I mean, I think it's a little nuanced, um, so if you bear with me for a moment, but, it's, it's something where if, um, if, uh, if we have the unfortunate situation where a business leaves, um, a, a new business, unless it's this, unless it's the same exact business, is supposed to go through the planning board, um, under the plan approval process for whatever the new use is. So i- in the table of uses, uh, we have categories. So if, if a new use is coming in and it's changing the category, then technically that's, that's triggering the requirement to come to the planning board. And that's, that's kind of this change in use that, um, the, the, the thing that we're really looking at is if, if a use can go into a building with no significant changes, you know, then, then there is no real, um, value of sending them to the planning board. And so the planning board, I talked about a couple of things, um, in their deliberations, but, um, there are only a couple of uses that would, that, that, that rose some discussion about uses that might have an impact. But even then, the value of, of sending them all the way to the planning board for that change in use was determined to not, not be, um, worth it really to, especially in this case. So then, I, I don't know.
If they were, if they were in office building, uh, allow, I mean, you were, uh, an office allowed in a certain location and also retail allowed in the certain location. And let's say, for example, it could be a residence and it happened to have been in an office and now they're, it's being changed to, uh, let's say, uh, a retail, then that would be expressed in our zoning and would take care of the issue itself, wouldn't have to go before the planning, uh, board for a special approval.
No, I think that, I think that's.
That's what we're proposing.
Right now, if, if you had, let's take a co- a copy shop, um, Puffer Printing, um, you know, when they left, they left two, two spaces open. If you wanted to do anything other than a copy shop, you would be subject to going to the planning board for plan approval. And that's, that's the, that's the hurdle that we're trying to remove here.
That seems quite burdensome, I would agree.
Right.
No further questions.
Anyone else? Any other counselors? Okay, seeing none, I, we can open it up to the public. If anyone from the public would like to make a comment on this amendment, please go ahead and raise your hand virtually by going into the participants' window and selecting Raise Your Hand. Okay. I'm not seeing anyone. So Counselor Derby?
Okay. So I have a motion here. Let me just make it so I can see it, okay? Motion to amend the East Hampton zoning ordinance by applying the following footnote to all uses listed as plan approval under the retail and services portion of Table 5-1 in downtown business district. No plan approval shall be required in those instances where a change in use is proposed and no substantial physical changes other than signs and ADA compliance or increases in footprint will occur to the site or building exterior as determined by the building commissioner and where no new additional requirements of the zoning ordinance must be met for the proposed use as recommended by the planning board on July 28th, 2020.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the amended East Hampton zoning ordinance, Table 5-1. Any further discussion? Barbara?
Salem Derby?
Yes.
Omar Gomez?
Aye.
JP Kuzinski?
I vote yes.
Bill Lynch?
Yes.
Tom Peak?
Aye.
Dan Rest?
Yes.
Lindsay Rothschild?
Yes.
Peg Coniff?
Yes.
Motion passes eight to zero. Congratulations. And I will take a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second to close the public hearing. Any discussion? Barbara?
Omar Gomez?
Aye.
JP Kuzinski?
Aye.
Bill Lynch?
Yes.
Tom Peak?
Aye.
Dan Rest?
Aye.
Lindsay Rothschild?
Aye.
Peg Coniff?
Yes.
Salem Derby?
Aye.
Public hearing is closed. Uh, all right, moving on, we have communication from elected official boards and committees. Is there anyone who would like to make an update or a comment? Counselor Gomez?
Thank you, Madam President. As the Chairman of the Public Safety, I want to make, I just want to make a comment and suggestions to our resident in East Hampton. I have a call last week from one of our constituent, uh, because he have signs that most of the people, probably most of the people in East Hampton doesn't like it. He was being, um, victim of vandalism and victim of, of people saying really bad stuff to him. I, uh, encourage to all citizen in, in, in our beautiful city to have more, uh, empathy with our neighbors. Something that, that I'm so happy about this country is that they give it the freedom to think differently, even when that people that you think is thinking differently is, is wrong. Uh, I, I think that's a video of this country. And I think we should respect everybody, uh, more, more, uh, if they're our neighbors. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Gomez. Counselor Derby?
So I just want to put a little public service announcement out. Right before this meeting, uh, the Board of Health met and they approved new, um, regulations for masking in East Hampton. Um, so that would be face covering in East Hampton. So I just want to, uh, help people, um, be aware of that. Uh, I think they should be having, uh, a press release tomorrow. Um, but as of now, uh, it is, it is now, um, and, and I believe that this is going to take effect on Friday. Uh, any, anytime you're in a public space in East Hampton, so that would include sidewalks, parking lots, parks, um, on the street, unless you're stationary and eating, um, so you're sitting at a park bench eating ice cream, um, you are required to have a mask on. And if you're on, uh, artery streets and you're walking on the sidewalk, you're required to have a mask on your person and use it when you pass other people. So that includes bikers, runners, anybody that's going to come within six feet of somebody else, um, needs to have a mask available to use. Uh, and I, and I just want to put that out there. It is going to be enforced, um, and it is going to be, it's not as unrealistic as the state fine, which is $300. It is a local fine of $50 for the first offense, and I believe it's a hundred for second, and then it goes up from there. So I just wanted to make sure everybody's aware of that. That's going to be coming, uh, into effect, I believe, on Friday. So keep your eyes out for that one.
Great. Thank you, Counselor Derby. Anyone, Counselor Kuzinski?
Uh, just a point of information follow-up for Counselor Derby. I heard you, I think everything you said, and I heard you say on an artery street sidewalk, but did you also mean to include any public way in the city, which would include the streets, uh, if you're riding a bicycle or walking in a neighborhood, per se?
Streets were not included unless they're in the, the downtown business, no industrial zone. But sidewalks are.
Thank you for the clarification.
Yep.
Counselor Peak?
Since we're doing public, uh, service announcements, uh, I just wanted to say, um, I know that there has been a lot of anxiety and consternation about, uh, some stuff that's been going on at the federal level, uh, related to the mail. And I, I just wanted to make sure that anyone who's listening, uh, knows that locally in East Hampton, uh, I'll give an example. I just voted, um, in the, the primary, and what I ended up doing, uh, is just taking my, my mail-in ballot and dropping it right into the drop box that is at the front door, uh, at 50 Payson. Uh, and it's very clearly marked. So just if there's, if, if, if you end up in a situation where you're, where you did request a mail-in ballot and it's getting late and you're, you're nervous about whether it'll get there in time or whether it'll get lost or something bad might happen to it, I just want to remind everyone, not every community has that, um, has that option, but we do. Um, so just throwing that out there.
Great. Thanks, Counselor Peak. Counselor Kuzinski, again.
Just another tag along to Counselor Peak. Thank you, Counselor Peak. Uh, wanted to just offer the opportunity to, uh, Barbara La Bombard to just tell us, since we're really coming right up on the election, what the plans are for the election in terms of being able to mail in, being able to, uh, vote early, so everybody has an understanding of the plan.
Barb, if you'd like to give a summary of kind of?
Sure. Well, well, as of today, we've mailed out over 4,000 ballots and they're coming back in very well. Um, actually, we've been getting more through the drop box than we have by mail. Whether that will increase, um, we'll see. Um, in addition, I want to make sure everybody knows that we will have, um, in-person early voting, which starts this Saturday, um, this Saturday and runs through next Friday. Uh, hours are posted on the website. Um, we will be open Saturday and Sunday and every day next week. The deadline to apply for a by-mail ballot is August 26th, so that is the deadline to apply. The ballots have to be back to my office by 8 o'clock and close the polls on September 1st. Election Day voting is the same as always. We will be voting at East Hampton High School and White Brook Middle School, 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM, just like always. So that's pretty much how things are right now.
Thank you, Barb.
May I ask Barb a question, Counselor?
Sure.
Has there been any discussion or thought to, about, let's say, a pop-up tent outside your facility? If someone doesn't want to come in, could they call your office? And someone can meet them in the enclosure and just be able to vote without actually coming in, vote early without coming in? Or is mail-in the only option that's?
No, actually, um, voting like that is not allowed by the state.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay, great. I, I wanted to introduce, uh, Fran Smith. Fran is the General Manager of Reminder Publishing. Fran, um, I asked him to attend this evening because there has been some conversation around the newspapers that were starting to get delivered free, the reminder. And I wa- I asked Fran if he could please come and just talk about the process, talk about the, uh, the reminder and why it's important and why they are doing what they do. So Fran, I will take, I will hand it over to you.
Thank you. Thanks, Peg. Thanks for inviting me and, uh, I really appreciate, um, getting a chance to say hi. We, uh, and congratulations on a few things. Uh, congratulations on, uh, getting your, your meeting notes up on your website, uh, faster. And congratulations on being, uh, among the best towns in the state in census response. And I know about those things because I read it in tomorrow's newspaper. So, um, there's eight stories about East Hampton in our paper that comes out. Some of it was delivered today, some of it will be delivered tomorrow. But it really, uh, reflects the town and we're happy to, to be East Hampton's newspaper. We're happy, East Hampton deserves its own newspaper, certainly. And, um, I, I, I know a lot about newspapers. I've been doing it since 1978. I do have, I run the Reminder Newspaper Group and I also have my left foot in the Republican, so I, I, that's my part-time job. So I do know the Republican is, and, and the Gazette, neither, I think, are, have, you know, done as well as they should have done, and we want to fill that role to, to reflect, uh, the news. You know, something that Councilman Derby mentioned about, uh, the public space wearing a mask, we can get the word out to everybody because our paper goes to every, almost every home. So we, that's what we want to do. That's what we're here for. And, um, you know, I want to talk about our delivery. You know, uh, I, when we, when we lost our newspaper, um, we weren't, we didn't know that there was a, an ordinance about certain types of delivery. We want to do it the right way. We want to be good citizens. We want to be, we want to make sure that, uh, we, we don't litter or, or do anything bad to the town. We want to be good for the town. We want to be something really, really good. We're in the public service business and, and being a, being in, being in, uh, in, in that business, we have to be liked by everyone. So, um, you know, we're asking, we're asking to give us a chance to prove that we're going to do this right. Uh, we do do driveway delivery, unless someone receives the Republican, we insert the paper into the Republican. But we're going to try to do it right. We want it, we want it to be accurate. We only want to deliver to people who really want to read it. If someone doesn't want to read it, and we've, we've, we've stopped over 200 homes so far for people who don't want it. Uh, we are going to honor every one of those stops. We're going to do it right. We're delivering, uh, 100% biodegradable bags. There's a notice, uh, in the newspaper, every, uh, every newspaper that says how to stop the paper, if you want to stop it, there's a phone number and an email, uh, address. My email is fsmith@repub.com and my direct line is 788-1105. And anyone can call me or email me at any time and, uh, we will have somebody, uh, in that neighborhood within an hour, making sure that it's done right. So we take pride in that. We deliver to every home in 13 towns here. Long Meadow East, Long Meadow, Agawam, West Springfield, Wilbraham, Hamden, Feeding Hills, Westfield, Southwick, Chickapee, East Hampton, Southampton, West Hampton. And we're not done yet. We have 10 more newspapers to launch in the next three years. So launching a newspaper in the middle of a pandemic, um, take pride in East Hampton being the one that was picked for that because it's the only new newspaper in the United States that happened during this pandemic. And we're proud, we're proud of it and we want to do it right. And if there's any complaints, the buck stops at my desk and I will make sure they get taken care of.
Fran, can you talk a little bit about, um, so the distribution is to the driveway?
Yes.
And what is the process for, um, I, I know you said it's in the paper, but can you speak to the process to dis-enroll?
Sure.
And also, if you, if we, driving around the city, see some that have not been picked up or are old or are wet, how do we get those taken care of as well?
You could email, um, either me, fsmith@repub.com, or Nate@thewestfieldnewsgroup.com, thewestfieldnewsgroup.com. Either way, we'll get it taken care of right away. We will probably know that peg before you do. We monitor, we not only deliver the papers, but we send out, uh, route checkers that come, that go out and drive around town on Thursday, late in Thursday and early Friday to check on delivery. Number one, we're checking to make sure that they, the carriers did the job the right way. And number two, if we see anything wrong or a mess, we, we will immediately stop it. Anybody who hasn't picked up last week's paper doesn't get another one. We'll pick, we, what we may do is pick up the old one and leave one more, thinking they might have been on vacation. But then the next week, we'll make a note and stop that address. We've stopped more addresses than anybody calling us by our, by our route checking. And we take pride in that. And I, I've been managing circulation departments, like I said, since 1978. So, um, we know how to do it right. So we know how to do it right and we understand why, why a town would be apprehensive about, you know, newspapers. Because some, most, a lot of newspaper companies, some newspaper companies don't check it like we do. We put the extra time and extra money into it.
Do any counselors have any questions for Mr. Smith, Counselor Derby?
Fran, thanks, thanks so much for coming, I appreciate it. And let me just say that I do appreciate a new newspaper that covers East Hampton. I think that's great, you know, I think that especially at this time with people having difficulty with understanding news and facts. I think it's important to have, you know, people that are doing journalism, so that's great. You know, I think my only concern is, we passed, I think it was in 2002. We passed an ordinance that prohibits newspapers in plastic to be thrown on people's driveways. I don't know if you're aware of that.
I became aware of it after we launched, yes.
Yeah, and so, you know, and we did that in response to the fact that, you know, basically what was happening was. And maybe the organization that was doing it wasn't as responsible, but I mean, I think that even still, I've seen, they end up in the street. When it's winter time, they end up getting covered in snow, they jam people's and destroy people's snow blowers, things like that. And, you know, and I was thinking like, well, what would be a good solution? I imagine one of the reasons why you are trying to get these out to everybody is it increases circulation, shows your advertisers that you have a good, you know, a good, you know, people looking at it. And I think it was the Advocate that always had little boxes around town. You know, I think that could be an alternative. Or not necessarily exclusively alternative, but it could be an interesting way for people to get it downtown near the promenade. And I also think, so the way the ordinance reads is it's, you know, it's without the owner's permission. So if people opted in and they gave you permission, then they can, you can throw it on to their driveway. I don't want to speak out of turn, I guess I would defer to Counselor Rist, who is also on the council when we pass that. But, you know, I just wanted to put that out there, like I think you're doing some really good stuff. But I also wanted to just acknowledge that we do have a law on the books that the cognizant of.
So let me address a couple of things, so I do like the, what we call bulk drop. So we do do so, in addition to our home delivery, we do put stacks of newspapers in places for people to pick them up. Mostly for people who work in town but don't live in towns, because they wouldn't get one delivered to their home. We know that other newspapers in the past have done, not done it the right way. We're asking for time to prove that we will do it the right way. One of the things that you'll notice in our newspaper, if you grab it, is that each newspaper that you'll get to either delivered today or tomorrow. Will have four things inside of it besides the newspaper. There'll be a big Y flyer, a Stop and Shop flyer, and two coupon packages, one from Velasis, one from News America. Those are money saving coupons for residents who want to save money on, everybody eats. So we know that everybody wants to look at food coupons, everybody cares about food prices. So that's why we carry all the food, the discounts and the flyers. The other thing is, to address the winter time, we have a two day delivery window, we have a Wednesday, Thursday delivery window, we do that on purpose. We do it because if it's snowing on a Wednesday, we're not delivering on Wednesday. If it's snowing on a Thursday, we're not delivering on a Thursday. And if we break somebody's snow blower, we're going to fix it. So we're doing it, we're trying to be as upright as we can and be partners with the community. I understand the ordinance and I guess what I'm asking for is some time and a little bit of an exemption to prove that we can do it right and, and not mess up.
Okay, Counselor Rist.
Yes, thank you, Fran, I do appreciate one thing. I want to point out the difference between people that have newspapers delivered currently. And that is because I subscribe, for instance, to newspapers. And they're thrown in my driveway, but I've opted in to subscribe, which is allowed by the ordinance. You're providing a free service, which means you don't have the filter of a subscription to remove somebody from a list. But what you're doing, I think, which is admirable, is you route checks and you're listening to people if they don't want it. I believe that satisfies to a degree the ordinance and the ordinance is enforced when we get enough complaints. If we get a lot of complaints, as we did, then we made the ordinance, I think Salem, that's what you're referring to. We had a lot of complaints about people, there was an advertising newspaper that was thrown out. That's when action will be taken. But I believe you're trying to intercede those complaints by listening to people, by having the route checks. If people don't want the paper, you're trying to make sure that they know how to get rid of the paper. So I believe if we don't get a lot of complaints and counselors get complaints, the city will get complaints, the mayor will get complaints. If we get a lot of them, then we'd have to look at it. But I appreciate the fact that you're trying hard to make sure people want the paper. And I do appreciate an East Hampton paper, I like that, so good luck and I hope people accept it.
If you do get one complaint, please send it to me. I take everyone personally and seriously. And I'm a company, so.
I think I heard Counselor Lynch try to get in here.
Yes, thank you President Coniff, thank you and I agree, I think it's great. I'm a big fan of the newspaper, especially, you know, that focuses on our own community. As probably all the counselors here, we love our community and that's why we do this. So it's, I think it's a great thing and I appreciate it. So I don't know if you already mentioned it or not, how could I, because I haven't received this newspaper, this is the first I've heard of it. So how do I get on your mailing list if I know I'm not on it?
First of all, some carriers in trouble tonight. Secondly, please email me your address and I'll make sure it gets taken care of. My email is fsmith@repub, R E P U B. I'm still using my old Springfield Republican newspaper email address, repub.com. And I'll make sure it gets taken care of right away. You'll have one tomorrow.
Awesome, thank you so much and the other question I had or whatever, so, and I'm going to shoot myself in the foot here, I work for Stop and Shop, so I appreciate that you have our flyer in it. But being an East Hampton flyer, being an East Hampton community, would you look at Biggie's or have you contacted Biggie's for their flyer? And that would be my only other.
Biggie starts running with us in the middle of September, they'll start running with us mid-September.
Beautiful, thank you.
I can't wait. And I fear the paper is, the less it blows in the wind, which is another nice thing.
Counselor Gomez.
Thank you, Madam President, and thank you Fran for being here. I think it's great that we are going to, that we are having a newspaper. Giving some information to our community. And by the way, I didn't receive it either. So you have to put my street in that list because we didn't receive it.
Please shoot me a short email at fsmith@repub.com.
Thank you.
If you haven't met Chris Mazel yet, I hope you all do, he's our editor and he's a wonderful guy. And you can reach out to him anytime with any story ideas.
Okay, great.
The numbers in the paper.
Counselor Kuzinski.
Just would like to say, Fran, thank you very much for your journalism of East Hampton and your good coverage of. The committees and the city council and all the news in the city. I find it remarkable that in this time where newspapers are shrinking and shrinking and shrinking. That someone is focusing on us and doing such in-depth coverage. So I appreciate the format and the hard work and your willingness to work with the community. To make sure we don't get any complaints or if we do, they get addressed immediately, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the counselors, comments? Okay, I'll just say Fran, I appreciate that you came out tonight. We didn't know what we were going to face, so I appreciate your, your great attitude and courage. And we're going to keep an eye on this as a council and you and I will keep in touch and. Should anything turn into something, let's have more discussion and perhaps, you know, we can, we can take it to the next level. But at this point, I just really appreciate that you're out here and that you're doing something for the community. And I look forward to seeing it, I most importantly, look forward to seeing Counselor Peake's face taking up half of the front page the other day. With his orange, it was terrifying, but. But no, I really appreciate you coming out and we do enjoy the paper and I appreciate it and we'll stay in touch.
Thanks for, thanks for your patience with us, I appreciate it.
You bet, take care, thanks Fran. All right, anything else from you Dan, Counselor Rist?
Madam President, I'm good, except to echo what Salem said about masks. Why not wear them all the time, whether you think you're safe or not, it doesn't hurt anybody. If you pass somebody on a side street and you're both wearing masks, you're both safe. So I want to echo what Salem said, let's be safe, it's not over. We may have a low percentage of infection rate, but it is not over, so please be safe out there.
Great, thank you. And now we will move to Mayor Communications, Mayor LaChapelle.
Good evening, one, I am asking, removing the request to authorize a shared nursing contract with North Hampton to do our COVID-19 tracing. North Hampton does not have the capacity to enter into a joint agreement at this time. We still have need for public nursing and are going to pursue our own position. And work within the CARES budget and the department budget to add one full-time public nurse. We'll see, the job market's very tough, as you can imagine. But, so at this point, we are not seeking, I'm not seeking authorization to do a shared contract. My other item is that the appointment for the Department of Public Works Director Greg Nudelman. I'm asking, I'm removing from this agenda and putting it forward to the Board of Public Works. I attended their meeting earlier tonight to talk about the process as laid out in the charter. And we'll be putting that appointment to, they will get the package in the next 24 hours or so. And then their September meeting, there will be consideration of Greg Nudelman as the permanent director. For general public knowledge, he is serving in that capacity now, pending confirmation. We have reached contract negotiation, contract with him, mutually agreed contract. And the Chair of the Board of Public Works, Thomas Malsberry, was a part of the hiring committee. So that will go off of City Council and to the Board of Public Works meeting in September.
Okay.
I would also, just got. An email from Kathy Gray. She is too shaken to join this meeting to speak to her appointment. And instead as well, wanted to finish working with the police on the invasion on her personal property and home.
So just for the council's edification on that. In the Appointment Committee meeting prior to this meeting, there was. During the meeting, there was a situation where Kathy did not feel safe because there were some individuals who were harassing her from the street or on her property. And the police were called, so that's the reason she is not here in this meeting for her appointment vote. And that is what the mayor is referring to.
And if I could just address, one, and I mean the incident, I think I expressed. In the moment outrage and that continues, but this was not just a car that pulled up into her driveway. This was a person who got out of that car yelling and screaming, banging on her front and side doors. Saying that he was specifically there because of her appointment. Regardless of what you think the appointment or not, it's disgusting. It's disgusting. And this is not about comparing, the other thing I'll just go on the record and say, this is not comparing if it is disgusting based on somebody's ethnicity or how they're oriented. It's just common humanity, it's disgusting. The other just procedural, it came up in the last, the appointments meeting. So I think I've been really clear about this. In the conversations around the Community Relations Committee. There was tremendous pressure from and input from this community about having a Human Rights Commission. And the ask around that Humans Rights Commission was to have individual subpoena and investigatory powers. Which is not available to a city committee as per our Home Rule Charter. It also runs afoul of labor law, both for all employees but also labor contracts. In the alternative, I very specifically created the Community Relations Committee in a way that is independent from my office. And from the police office, separate than cities around us, including North Hampton and Holyoke. When someone applies for that committee, it is first come, first served. I will sit down with anybody or talk to anybody through the entire list of what appointments are available and what they do. And if they present a resume, I certainly will talk to them. It is their decision to apply or not apply. With the CRC specifically, because it is Community Relations. I put the name forward with space available, I check three basic things, if they're a resident, if they're 18, if they can commit to attending meetings. And then the second step of the process, like all of my appointments, goes to the City Council for public discussion. The idea that there should be more vetting upfront on the executive branch, I find absolutely inexplicably against what an executive branch should be doing. With a committee like this that is to serve the community and should not be dependent on screening from the mayor's office. I've expressed concerns before about how these are discussed in the community, I'm worried for people's privacy. I understand, and the last thing I will say to this. I am delighted to see the number of people attending these meetings and talking. I'm delighted that I'm getting fewer Facebook posts that people want me to respond to. This is the place for us to discuss what's going on in our community. But please, please, let's all think hard about, there was a Band-Aid ripped off tonight and it wasn't a bad thing that it's ripped off. There is a very sour, bitter conversation to be had publicly around this nation, but certainly in the city. And regardless of what you think of the appointment of Kathy Gray or Greg Nudelman or Jason Montgomery. This is the tone of conversation we have to have to get through to some truth and common humanity, so be it. Thank you.
Thank you Mayor, Counselor Rist.
I just want to support the mayor and make sure people understand, there's a huge difference between an appointment to the Community Relations Board, which is an independent body. Independence from the mayor's office allows it to have an objective point of view without fear from a political entity, which is the mayor. On the other hand, appointments to the Planning Board, to the Board of Public Works, for directors. The mayor must and should vet those appointments as she does. Because they're appointments that often have regulatory power or are directors of departments. And it is her duty to make sure she puts forward someone who fits the job description for that position. On the other hand, community really, as she said, they come first come, first served, she doesn't vet them. And I've learned a lot in this whole discussion about how that process works. And it works for the city to have that independence. So that it's not politically influenced, except for the appointment which is vetted by us. That's our job and we're doing it now and we're going to continue to do that. Because we are the representatives of the community, so I appreciate what the mayor said, thank you.
Thank you Counselor Rist, any other counselors have any questions for the mayor? Okay, seeing none, thank you Mayor LaChapelle, appreciate it. Moving on, we will do reports of standing committees, finance, Counselor Rist.
Thank you Madam President, we had a finance meeting last week and at that meeting, we approved both CPA. Supplemental appropriations, which are up for public hearing at the next meeting in September. We also discussed at length the fiscal report that the city auditor put out. And I'll just review that a minute, it's pretty good news, it is not the final report, which will come later. But it does show a fairly good revenue surplus, which is excellent. One of the things that is in there is, we did have an excise taxes over $700,000, which, from cannabis. And we did have an impact fee that has to be moved out of free cash when it comes later on. But that impact fee of $720,000, which has to be restricted to that. has to be restricted to that which is allowed by law for the impact of cannabis in a community. We also have a very large investment, we're allowed to invest when we borrow our bond, apparently, and we got a good return on that investment. And so we have about a $2.5 million general fund surplus. Please know that that is not our final numbers for free cash. That can't be, Val was very clear that that can't be it. But I would say that we are in a fairly good position financially, should it be necessary for us to supplement our budget, because the state is unable to give us the cherry sheet money that they had promised before the pandemic. And that's a big if. They have to solve that, and they haven't even gotten to it yet. So I don't know when that's coming. But it is good to know that if we are, is necessary for us to use, to find funds, I'm expecting that we'll have funds from free cash to supplement our budget should we have to. Let's hope we don't, because we could use that money for other things. Secondly, I just wanted to bring up, because I am the Chair of the CPA, and we did approve the rent relief, I sent an email from Jamie Webb today to all the counselors, just to say that there has been a little bump in the road. But the Planning Board and Jeff and Jamie are optimistic that they can get an agency to respond to the RFP. But the agencies did not respond initially because they did not have enough, what's called, capacity to administer another program. They've gotten a great deal of funds from different organizations, which they're dealing with now to help with rent relief. The other thing that's good is, we don't, we have a moratorium until October. So Jeff and Jamie hope that the rent relief program can get up and running in September. So read that email if you want more information. Finally, next week, we are meeting on the 26th, primarily to go over salaries and stipends. We have a deadline of December to decide if we're going to increase salaries and stipends for elected officials, boards, or committee members. And it's an interesting discussion, and we invite all the counselors to it, because we're going to go into that in detail next week. And that's the only thing, I believe, that'll be on the agenda for next week. Madam President, that concludes.
Counsel Rist, for the 8/26 meeting, is that 5:30?
Yes, please.
And do you, or have we already set the public hearing for the appropriations?
I thought we did.
I think we did. Okay.
Yeah, they're listed on the agenda as set for September 2.
Okay, good. All right, great. Thank you, Counsel Rist.
You're welcome.
Public Safety, Counsel Gomez.
Thank you, Madam President. We met Monday. We only discussed one of the topics that we have on the agenda, because we're still working on the request of the review on street parking and the traffic rules and orders. We're still working on that. So we're being working with the Williston Avenue Pedestrian and Bicycle Improvement and temporary on street parking ban. The city had a grant that was going to allow us to have a bike path in Williston Avenue and to have a new crosswalk kind of front of the city hall through the pond. That's why we have a discussion. The city planner, Jeff Bag, he sent letters to the neighbors in the area. Sadly, none of them came to our meetings that we had to see if one of them, they have any concern about this. Besides that, I don't have anything else. Instead of, you led me to ask the city planner if he want to add something, Madam President.
Yeah. Do you have, sorry, do we need to make a motion for that temporary?
Yes.
Parking ban? And Jeff, is there something you'd like to add regarding that?
Yeah, if I could, I appreciate the introduction by Counsel Gomez. I think it's good. And I think it's exciting and an opportunity for us. And so if you don't mind, I do want to elaborate, because I don't know that, you know, we did do, we did do a press release. And actually, I think the reminder had an article about it, which is great. But we received $160,000 from Mass DOT for our Shared Streets Program. And I think, as Counsel Gomez said, it's actually kind of three projects that are really oriented around pedestrian improvements and pedestrian safety. And so it's kind of just, if you don't mind, it's an opportunity for me to just say a couple of things. And there is a vote. So we did, and there's, there's two projects that don't require any council action. So on Pleasant Street, in between Pleasant Green and the Mills, if you're going towards where we have the Ferry Street project, on sort of the Pleasant Green side, there's, there's a sidewalk that runs to a point where it ends and crosses Pleasant Street to go over. And so one of the improvements is a bump out and a new cross, like an upgraded crosswalk there with, really, the catchphrase that I'm pretty excited about is the RRFBs, it's really hard to say, but it's the Rectangular Rapid Flashing Beacon. So they went up recently on Route 10 as part of the River Valley Project. They were installed on Cottage Street, and Williston has installed a couple as well. So we, that's a big upgrade for pedestrian safety there. And on Pleasant Street, the sidewalk is going to get bumped out, so that a pedestrian moves out to the sidewalk and gets out in the, past the view of a parked car. So that's an important improvement over on Pleasant Street. And the way that we presented that was that it's adding to our already significant improvements around Ferry Street. And it's giving access for people who live in Pleasant Green to get across. Am I going too long?
No, I just wanted to say, Jeff, while I appreciate all of this, I think if we could stay to the pedestrian, I mean, for what we're going to be voting on tonight, and then if we need to expand into other areas, we can do that.
All right, I'll continue my excitement about it. The great part, that part's great. So the part that needs council vote, and if, would you mind if I shared screen for this element?
Let me make you co-host.
It's worth a little explanation.
Yep.
And it's important, I think, to explain that this is temporary. We have a couple planning documents in place, mainly the Complete Streets Plan. It was done in 2017. It's actually a very great plan that outlines all kinds of crosswalks, sidewalks, and other improvements that we need to do. And in that 2017 plan, it calls for a permanent bike lane on Williston Ave. And we saw this opportunity with the Mass DOT Shared Streets, because they gave some priority to projects that could be started as temporary, that could become permanent. And we are, you know, we're not, we don't have a lot of bike facilities in town. You know, on Cottage Street, we installed our first Sheroes. And Sheroes don't even do that much for bicyclists. So this is kind of the next step towards experimenting a little bit with increasing bicycle safety. And before I show the map, the funding really looked at safe routes to schools. So it was really two pots, two pots of projects. One was restaurants, and going out and converting parking spaces to dining. And we didn't, we didn't get a lot of bikes initially with that kind of concept. So we went with the safer route to school. And of course, in a sick, twisted fate, there's no one going to school right now. But we're going to go forward with this temporary bike lane improvement. And I'll show the image now of what, hopefully, my computer screen doesn't freeze. It's coming. I put together a graphic, which I like to do, because a lot of times, these kinds of images speak more than words. But it's coming.
Information, please.
Yes.
I can't read what you're posting. Is there any chance you could make it a little larger for the public? Thank you.
Has my screen updated now to the images?
Yes.
Okay. So on the page right.
You cannot make it any bigger, Jeff?
It's showing full screen on mine.
Counsel Kuzinski, up at the top where it says View Options, if you click that, you might be able to increase the size. At the top of your screen there, right next to the green share screen, if you're seeing that. No? Okay.
Can you see it, President Coniff?
I can see it, yeah. I just make it bigger for myself. I was hoping Counsel Kuzinski could do the same. But go ahead.
Jeff, it did get bigger. It did get bigger when you hit the plus button there.
Okay. Great. I love technology. On the, the image that I'm trying to show is, on the, on the right side, is the existing conditions of Williston Ave. And you can see, you know, I've taken some inventories, some photographs of people riding bicycles and even walking on this side. So the importance of this project is that we are going to put, this is all basically lines and striping that is going to happen. And then there are, in the image on the left, there are these temporary, they're, they're a version of construction cones. They're a little bit taller. They're not barrels, but they're narrower. And that's, that's the temporary portion of this. So what's going to happen is that the yellow lines in the center of Williston Ave are going to shift over a couple feet to the left. And so what it's going to do is, it's going to free up six to eight feet on the, on the cemetery side for a designated bike lane to occur. And it's going to be marked with paint initially, which is on the picture on the left there. It's about a two-foot white painted area. And then within that is this temporary cone. And they're going to be spaced out every 20 feet. And so what it's going to create is this temporary separated bike lane that's going to go from the entrance of the cemetery, which is right by the pond. And it's going to go up the small hill around the corner, up Williston Ave to the point at the high school. There'll be a new painted crosswalk, so that's this image over here, the project area. There will be a new painted crosswalk, which will bring bicyclists into the high school parking lot. And so there's an eight-foot wide existing sidewalk already there. What, and so that's kind of goal number one, is to get students and people from the downtown to the high school. Sort of the second element of the same project is, at the back of the parking lot of the high school, if you are familiar with that area, there is an existing paved path that gets to Daily Field and just ends. So in terms of someone who might be in a wheelchair, or someone who has a stroller, or someone walking gets onto this paved path, and then it just ends in your, in a grassy area of Daily Field. So this funding will allow us to construct a six-foot wide paved path from the back of the high school to Nanituck Park. So it's the beginnings of this idea that has been in the master plan since 2008, to try to connect, kind of create bicycle and pedestrian access from the downtown to the school to Nanituck. And then, as we've talked about before, you know, the bigger vision is to try to then connect through the woods to the new elementary school. So it's all kind of part of this funding that is available for this exact purpose. And we were so excited to get this. The goal is for our contractor, we're accepting bid proposals tomorrow. This is a rapid implementation project. So Mass DOT wants all three of the projects done by October 9. And the goal is to have this bike lane, which is temporary, it's striping, to have it done as early as possible, so that people can start to use it. So the reality of having no students going to school is certainly unfortunate. But with the Valley Bike Share Station at 50 Payson, we're going to start to encourage people that they can get to Nanituck Park. Anyone in East Hampton can come and go back and forth. So it's going to be wide enough for two people to come and go. So Williston Ave currently is prohibited for on-street parking. So that means that technically, I mean, I'm sorry, it's the reverse. So right now, technically, a car could park on Williston Ave. And so the request is to temporarily prohibit on-street parking, so that we can shift the lanes and add the space. As Counsel Gomez mentioned, we did send a letter to all residents on Williston Ave. And I do think that there was a small snafu, gosh, there always is, that we had a meeting scheduled on August 4, which was the day that we had the tropical storm hit. Power was lost, and the meeting got canceled. The good news, I think, in terms of process, was that in the letter, it did say that the City Council was going to take the vote on August 19. So I think that the public process here is totally genuine and is above and beyond, you know, requirements, which, you know, we have no requirement to do this. And it's really hard sometimes to go above and beyond, but we wanted to do that. So the motion proposes the temporary parking ban to go until December 2021. So it seems long, but we're going to paint the lines, and then the cones will go in. And then for the winter, for plowing, the cones will be removed. But the lines will still be painted. And then next spring, we'll put the cones out. Ideally, we're going back to school. And we'll run the temporary lanes through summer, next summer, and then the fall. So that's my very long summary of that.
Thank you. Jeff, Counsel Gomez?
Yes. Before making the motion of any question for the other city councils, I just want to say, thank you, thank you for the planning department to having this kind of grant for the safety of the pedestrian in our city and being more bicycle friendly. I think we need it, and I think we're going to the right direction. Before making the motion, is any question to Jeff? No?
I don't see any.
All right. So I'm going to entertain a motion. I want to make a motion to temporarily for a period extending to December 2021, including Williston Avenue, both sides, from the entrance of the Brookside Cemetery to the entrance of East Hampton High School, as one of the streets listed on the Section 1-24 of the City of East Hampton Parking Rules and Order, parking prohibited in certain streets at all times, for the purpose of facilitating the creation of the temporary separate bike lanes funded by Mass DOT Shared Street Program.
Second. Motion and a second to temporarily include Williston Avenue, everything he just said. Any further discussion?
Can I just add one more thing? So?
No, actually, you can't, Jeff. Sorry. We have a motion on the floor. Jeff, we have a motion on the floor. Sorry. Nope, you can't. All right. No further discussion from the counselors? All right. Counsel Kuzinski.
Just a point of information, I certainly would love to hear from Planner Bag, and would ask for the withdrawal of the motion and the second, be able to do so?
Point of order, we have a new rule that allows questions to a department head.
Okay.
During the motion on the floor, to prevent this kind of thing happening on the floor.
All right, go ahead, Jeff.
I'm very sorry.
You're killing me. Go ahead.
It's, it's, it's hard. It's a grapple between information sharing and, and having information to share. I just wanted to really kind of just reiterate what Counsel Gomez said, is that there's also a component of this project, which adds a handicapped accessible crosswalk from 50 Payson to the end of the pond promenade, and continues the sidewalk from the promenade to the cemetery, which is a huge gap right now in just simple accessibility. And there's rapid flashing beacons to be installed there. So I think, I think this is just a huge project for, for East Hampton, and this has been my only opportunity to talk about it. So thank you.
We'll need another motion.
The motion wasn't with.
Oh, right, right. We didn't. Right. Sorry about that. You're all so helpful. Okay. We'll take a vote. Roll call. JP Kuzinski?
Aye.
Bill Lynch?
Aye.
Tom Peak?
Aye.
Dan Rist?
Aye.
Lindsay Rothschild?
Aye.
Peg Coniff?
Yes.
Salem Derby?
Aye.
Omar Gomez?
Aye.
Okay. Motion passes eight to zero. Anything else, Counsel Gomez?
Yes, we have something new in the agenda. I want to schedule a public hearing for the fuel storage licenses application on 35 and 40 O'Neill Street.
Okay.
I want to schedule that for September 2 at 6:15. There was a motion.
You're, you're scheduling the public hearing?
Yep.
Okay.
You also have to move it to committee, Omar.
So, okay, so go ahead, Omar, and move that to public hearing.
Okay, I want to move to the Public Safety Committee, the fuel storage license application on 35 and 40 O'Neill Street.
Perfect.
Motion second to move the new business of a fuel storage license application to the Public Safety Committee. Any? Any further discussion? Barbara?
Bill Lynch?
Yes.
Tom Peak?
Aye.
Dan Rist?
Yes.
Lindsay Rothschild?
Yes.
Peg Coniff?
Yes.
Salem Derby?
Aye.
Omar Gomez?
Aye.
JP Kuzinski?
Yes.
And now, um, Barb, he can set the public hearing now, can he not?
Yeah, yeah. I just need to reach out to the company to get them to get
Because it needs to be two consecutive weeks of advertisements, correct?
Uh, no, I think just one, one advertisement.
Oh, all right. Okay.
Yep.
Right. Um, well, the, the point I think here is that we're trying to avoid September 16th because we will be reviewing the charter document at that point. So it's either September 2nd or it's November.
Fourth.
October.
October 7th. Wow.
I, I do think that the applicant would appreciate sooner rather than later.
Okay, so we'll go with, um, September 2nd.
September 2nd. So
Is that a motion?
Yes.
Second.
Motion is second to set a public hearing for the fuel storage license application for September 2nd. Any further discussion? Barbara? Tom Peak?
Aye.
Dan Rist?
Yes.
Lindsay Rothschild?
Yes.
Peg Coniff?
Yes.
Salem Derby?
Aye.
Omar Gomez?
Aye.
JP Kuzinski?
Yes.
Bill Lynch?
Yes.
Motion passes eight to zero.
Our next meeting is going to be September 1st at 6:00 PM and that concludes.
At 6:00 PM. Okay. Thank you, Counsel Gomez. Appointments, Counsel Lynch.
Thank you, President Coniff. As I try to get my stuff situated here, uh, we had a meeting this evening and, um, and, uh, we discussed three appointments. Um, I'll start with the, uh, first one, the city council appointment of Barbara Lombombard, uh, to the clerk to the city council, uh, with a term expiration of August 31st, 2022. Um, it, all councilors, um, uh, spoke very highly of Barbara. We all know Barbara. Uh, she's been the clerk to the council since 96. Um, she was unable to attend the meeting due to everything she has going on in her busy, uh, uh, position right now with the voting and everything else. Um, I did reach out to Barbara, um, earlier, um, and, uh, you know, I think everything she does for us, uh, speaks volumes. Um, and we all know, uh, how much of an asset she is. And multiple counselors that were in the meeting also spoke highly of her. So, um, I can't see if anybody has any comments or questions they'd like to say. If not, um, I'll entertain a motion.
Do you want to make that motion, Bill, or do you?
Yep. Yeah. No, I'll make it. I, I just didn't, I can't see if anybody's raising hands. So, um, I'll make a motion to, uh, approve the city council appointment of Barbara Lombombard, uh, to the clerk to the city council with a term expiration of 12/31/2022.
The expert, uh, excuse me, I think the expiration is, is it 8/31 or 12/20?
8/31.
It's August. Yeah, August 31st.
Okay.
Enthusiastic.
Enthusiastic second.
I think JP had it, but we'll give it to JP.
All right.
Okay, any further, uh, any further discussion? Okay. Barbara?
Dan Rist?
Yes.
Lindsay Rothschild?
Yes.
Peg Coniff?
Hundred percent yes.
Salem Derby?
Yes.
Omar Gomez?
Super yes.
JP Kuzinski?
Absolutely yes.
Bill Lynch?
Yes.
Uh, Tom Peak?
Yes.
Motion passes eight to zero. Congratulations, Barbara. You're stuck with us for a couple more years. Okay, Counsel Lynch.
Thank you. Um, the next one was Cindy, um, Mojica, I hope I'm pronouncing that right, and I apologize if I'm not, uh, to the East Hampton City Arts with a term expiration of 12/31/2022. Um, she was actually at the meeting and spoke, uh, um, as to why she wants to be involved. Uh, and it was very, uh, comforting to hear. Um, she wants to involve the schools and make that communication, uh, between the arts community and, and the school, um, arts community, if you will. And, uh, and I think that's great to reach out to the students, especially with the remote learning and everything else that's going to be going in. And, and, uh, I hadn't even thought of that, that disconnect that, that we have. And, uh, it was kind of, um, uh, uh, nice to hear. Uh, and, and then, uh, you know, just the comments that I've had, you know, personally, uh, knowing her and, and her family and everything else, they're very involved in the community, uh, at almost every event. And, uh, really I think it would be an asset to the, to the committee. So, uh, um, you know, it did pass three to zero. And, uh, if there's no questions or comments, I will, um, make the motion.
Uh, just an amendment, I think it passed to two to zero. Counselor Gomez had to abstain.
I, I apologize. Yes, it was two, zero with one abstention. Correct. My bad.
Uh, we can make a motion and then if anyone has any comments, we can do that, uh, during the, after the second. So do we have a motion?
I will make a motion to, um, approve the mayoral appointment of Cindy Mojica to the East Hampton City Arts with a term expiration 12/31/2022.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve Cindy Mojica to the East Hampton City Arts. Any discussion? I will make one comment, and that is that, um, Cindy is very involved with the schools. She's very involved with the community and it means a lot to her and she's very passionate about it. I know her personally. And so I am very enthusiastic about having Cindy on this committee. I, I welcome any committee that she wants to be on because I know she's very thoughtful. And, uh, I look forward to seeing her represent us on this committee. So yay, Cindy. Any comments? All right, Barbara.
Okay, first, who seconded that?
Um, Kuzinski. Counsel Kuzinski.
Okay, uh, Lindsay Rothschild. Peg Coniff?
Absolutely, yes.
Salem Derby?
Yes.
Omar Gomez?
Abstain.
Uh, JP Kuzinski?
Yes.
Bill Lynch?
Yes.
Tom Peak?
Yes.
Dan Rist?
Enthusiastic, yes.
Motion passes seven to zero. Congratulations, Cindy. Counsel Lynch.
Thank you. Uh, the third mayoral appointment that was, uh, brought up today was on Kathy Gray to the Community, Community Relations Committee with a term expiration 12/21/2022. Um, and, uh, um, there was, uh, multiple, um, attendees, uh, as well as Kathy. Um, and, uh, uh, some of the highlights that she, um, uh, brought up was emailed over last night, um, to all the counselors. If you had a chance to read it, uh, kind of goes through her history and what she brings to the table. Um, and, uh, um, working with, uh, you know, the UN Human Rights, um, observer and, and was listed in multiple, uh, dignitaries that she has worked with, um, and, and different publications that have, uh, published her, her writings as well. Uh, New York Post, Boston Herald and, and stuff that she had listed. Um, she was an educator in Western Mass and, uh, just wants to continue to serve the community. She is retired and, uh, wanted to be involved. Um, she did want to say that, uh, she doesn't want any political opinion of hers, whether it's left or right or indifferent. She wants to be part of the, uh, solution. There was, uh, multiple, uh, members. Um, I received, uh, about 25 emails from concerned residents, as I know I know some of the other counselors received some of these, uh, uh, concerns as well. And we heard some in the public speak, uh, earlier this evening. Um, and, and I think that, um, uh, the concern that, that I have, um, with, with the appointment personally would be that, uh, we've already set a precedence in my eyes with, uh, a previous appointment that we did not, um, admit onto the council because of publications, whether they be on Facebook, Twitter, or any other, um, uh, area. Um, and we did that because we want to have a community that feels comfortable, whether you are a left-winger or a right-winger and, and you want to make sure that the people that you are on that committee are comfortable to talk to. And that was kind of the precedence that we set. Um, and I think hearing part of the community, uh, there was, there was a lot of, uh, concern around that and, and being, um, a person that the community could go to. Um, so we, uh, had a lot of conversation around it. Um, we heard a lot of the, the, uh, uh, the community as well. And there was no recommendation because we actually ran out of time. It went into uh, about five minutes to six o'clock. Um, so we asked the people that didn't get to speak to come into public speak tonight. So that's why you heard them. Uh, so the, the committee did not vote on to recommend or not to recommend, uh, Kathy Gray to the Community Relations. I will make a motion, President Coniff, if you'd like to make the approval and then we can go through the discussion if you'd like.
Absolutely.
At that point?
Yes.
Okay. All right. So I will make a motion to approve Kathy Gray to the Community Relations Committee with a term expiration 12/31/2022.
Phil second for the purpose of having the motion put forward.
We have a motion, a second to approve Kathy Gray to the Community Relations Committee discussion. Anyone? Counsel Rist?
I have to say that, given all that I've heard, this committee needs to be objective, fair, and cannot have someone who has demonstrated a, I will say far-right position, which I don't believe on either scale, whether far-right or far-left, should be on this committee. I don't think she's a good fit. And I, I can't support this at this time, although I was appreciative of Kay Collins's remark about this not being a cancel culture idea. We do need opinions that are of various, uh, opinions, diverse opinions. But extreme opinions are not something we should allow on a committee that has to be primarily a committee that listens and acts with objectivity. So I can't support this particular appointment.
Counsel Rothschild?
Since all the members weren't there earlier, I might repeat some of what I said, but, um, also have, having received all the emails from community members and read the editorial, I haven't followed her on Facebook, um, but I just, the editorial she wrote to me had, was very problematic. I wouldn't even want to label this as far-right, to be honest. To me, it feels like a little detached from reality. And it's kind of all over the place in terms of left or right, but there's some phrasing like actual black and immigrant people that I find extremely problematic. And also minimizing elbow thrusting grievances. She minimized the grievances of the Black Lives Matter movement. Black Lives Matter movement is asking for people to, their family members for themselves not to be killed by police in our country. And to call that an elbow thrusting grievance is the complete minimization of their, of the grievance. So that, that's the problematic with that. The other thing I have is her resume itself. I don't, I feel that it is important to bring it up, the legitimacy of how she represents herself. She represents herself as a reporter for the New York Times, Boston Globe. I've done a lot of research, have not found one article published by her on any of these places. So has Eric Hulian, he mentioned earlier, and he's a librarian of 20 years. I also I, I would question if she worked with the United Nations. I, I just feel like there might be a detachment from reality and we really need to be checking the background and not just taking, unfortunately, taking people's word for what they do sometimes. But this, um, oh, also in her speak during the appointments committee and defending herself, she said she's published over 200 articles. It's on camera now of her saying that with the Gazette. I've done a quick search of that and that is also an untruth. So those are also my concerns besides the, um, viewpoint she put forth in the Gazette. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Rothschild. Anyone else? Counsel Gomez?
Thank you, Madam President. Um, first I just want to say thanks to Kathy to, for applying to a committee. Um, I encourage everybody in our city to apply for our committees. But I don't think this committee is for her. Uh, after reading the, um, her, uh, at the Gazette and some posts that she have on her personal page on Facebook. Uh, but I guess everybody can read it because I'm not her friend on Facebook and, and I, and I can read it. And after reading this, the mission statement of the, the CRC, uh, that is clear. Our mission is to promote positive relation, relations throughout East Hampton diverse population. We were, we work to build a sense of inclusion, community and pride, where community members feel welcome, accepted and valued. So for those reasons, I have to say that I'm going to vote no.
Thank you. I, I'm just checking someone else, Counsel Rothschild. Okay, Counsel Rothschild, go ahead.
I just wanted to add, echoing what the mayor said earlier, I completely denounce any kind of harassment of any applicant in our city. This is why we have this forum to discuss people's merits or issues. And we should be doing that and, and modeling, basic humanity. So, you know, we can discuss our legitimate issues with an applicant, but to, to cause any, to do any harassment of our fellow citizens only diminishes the legitimate arguments that we have. So please, just
Thank you, Counsel Rothschild. Any other comments? Counsel Peak?
Uh, yeah, I don't, uh, I don't disagree with anything that anyone has, um, said here. Uh, and I think that, um, there's some stuff here that's very troubling. Uh, I was not able to attend the appointments, uh, meetings. So I have a little bit less perspective than some people. This is a little bit tangential, but, um, this whole conversation has made me think a little bit about, um, the, when we were doing the Charter Review Committee, some of the discussions we had about the appointments process and about just sort of how it plays out and, um, how public that can be for some people. I think when this is all over, maybe that's, maybe that's something we, we, we have another talk about because I can see this being a, a, you know, in, in controversial situations, kind of a tense, uh, uncomfortable thing for some people who put their names forward. Um, it doesn't necessarily I'm going to vote, but it's just something that I couldn't help but just notice that the, the sort of thing, you know, most of the time these are, oh, thanks for volunteering and whatever. But when it gets down to things like this, it's a little, um, it's a little awkward. So we, that's something we, we just talk about, whether this process, whether there's, there's things about this process that could be handled differently, but I don't have any suggestions right now.
Okay. Anyone else? And I'll just make a, a comment, um, and I said this in the other committee as well, and, and I really echo a lot of what Counsel Rothschild said, uh, especially around the, the concept of harassing people. The serving of your community should be something that we celebrate. And to, to all of our collective thinking right now, certainly perhaps this, this particular appointment misses the mark. But it doesn't miss it to the degree that someone should be showing up at their house and knocking on their door, banging on their door. That's unacceptable. And that is something that I think we need to all kind of think about, um, as we go forward with this. I also want to, um, just a comment that Counsel Rist made around far-left, far-right. I kind of actually want to live in a world where we can have conversations with far-left and far-right, middle and semi-left, semi-right. I, I, I want to live in that world and I want to be able to have disagreements. And I want to be able to figure out a way to have dialogue. And whether or not we will ever agree on the ultimate solution, we need to understand where the other perspective is. And until we are able to have a conversation and a dialogue, we're not going to move anywhere because the far-left isn't always right. And the, actually, yeah, that's a little punny, but the far-right isn't correct and the far-left isn't always correct. And to take the position that you are the only correct person in the room is very destructive and it just kills any opportunity for success, progress and movement. So, so I, I, I just want to make sure that I'm personally on the record as saying, I want everybody at the table who will have a conversation of whatever variety and ideology you come from. For me, the most important thing is that you can listen and that you can have a respectful conversation. If that doesn't happen and you have prejudged people and you have, um, you've already put people into categories, not really a great place to start. So, uh, that is my only comment. I, I, Counsel Kuzinski, I think I saw your hand go up?
Thank you. I, uh, wholeheartedly endorse what you've said, Counsel Coniff. It is appalling that anyone who puts themselves forward would find themselves at risk of having somebody bang on their door and their windows, as reportedly happened. While we were having a meeting, there was a telephone conversation and I was wondering why the applicant was on the darn phone. Uh, when we're having a meeting about listening to why they would like to be serving on a committee. to why they would like to be serving on a committee. And the mayor told us that there was actually a police call, in effect, where the police were going or had been or were at her house, the applicant's house, and that is just unacceptable at every possible level. And I'm not quite sure how to rectify or, or make sense of that in, in a community where we want to see folks listen to one another's perspective and to hear all sides of issues, and to be free enough to be able to say what's on their mind. So I don't, I, I think having people of left or right, or wherever they're coming from, to be able to feel free to communicate is a way that everyone can learn. What was more important to me is that somebody have the ability to listen to someone else speak and to hear what they have to say. That way, hopefully, they can process and we can learn from one another. The experiences that the applicant wrote about in the private letter, email, and that was read at the committee meeting, I sounded like very good experience that I would like to see someone share in terms of being an advocate when folks' lives were being threatened. And I understand that that is one of the items, and I wish that we had an opportunity to have Kathy here to be able to talk to us about her vision. Unfortunately, what we've seen in the newspaper article and what we've seen in a purported Facebook posting, where she spoke about juvenile delinquents who had, that she knew, that were talking about, I don't really feel comfortable saying it, but it was written in her post, purportedly that they were trying to talk about white genocide and killing white people, just seemed to be way over the line for being on a committee where you can help to work together and to heal this community. So I am certainly not in favor of anyone who throws such incendiary remarks into the public forum and then will work on a committee to heal our city. Yet I do feel uncomfortable that here we are voting, and someone's house was accosted this evening, and they feel like they have to deal with the police about that for their own safety and aren't at this meeting to discuss the matter. That is why I voted not to adjourn without addressing an opportunity to have that meeting continue at the level of the Appointments Committee. So I don't know if anyone else has similar reaction in any way. I do not want to continue this, this, this matter any further than it must be continued, but is anyone else uncomfortable in any way about this?
I'll speak for myself. I am not. I, I find that event that happened abhorrent, but up to that point, I believe that I had all of the information that I needed to make my decision. That was just an unfortunate event that happened, but, but I had everything I needed up to that point, so I'm comfortable with the way I'm going to vote. Anyone else have any other comments? Is that you? Oh, Council Derry?
Yeah, for the sake of brevity, I'll, I'll just say that I, I agree with almost everything that's been said. But, and I think that this is relatively simple for us because we've already set this precedent. You know, when Jim Valencourt, who's a super-nice guy, was put forward, it was brought up that he had made some, you know, kind of divisive posts, and, and, and he wasn't accepted. You know, I think the CRC is something that we want, people that are going to help unify people, not necessarily polarize people. So, I mean, for me, it's kind of, you know, it's easy. There's a lot of people in East Hampton that could be on the CRC that will help unify and be able to listen to people's concerns and find positive solutions, and, and I don't think we need the most divisive applicants on there. So that's all I have to say.
Council Peake?
This comment will be more coherent than my last one. So, yeah, I just, I kind, there was something that you said, Councilor Coniff, that I kind of wanted to, to echo. Just with, with all due respect towards Councilor Rist, who I work with a lot and really, you know, like, when you, when you said the thing about far-left and far-right and, and whatnot, I, I don't feel personally that I want to ever be put in a position of being like the judge of who falls within the, like, Overton window that can exist on a committee. Just because, I mean, if we're being honest, there's probably a lot of people in America who would look at some of the beliefs that I personally have and consider me far-left. I don't personally, but some people probably would. I don't think that that means that I'm unfit to do my job here. The concern that I have right now has less to do with someone, where someone fits on a political spectrum, as the fact that, that this particular applicant made a, like, on the week of this appointment, made a high-profile, made a high-profile op-ed, and in that op-ed, wrote some fairly incendiary things about a group who this very committee will be working with fairly intensively. And to me, I just don't see how that doesn't put a bad taste in people's mouth, like, just coming into this whole thing. It just, it, to me, like, it's not about where you stand on the political spectrum, it's about the fact that, like, comments that have very recently been made very specifically about a specific group of people who this specific committee is going to be working with, just makes it hard for me to believe that that wouldn't compromise their ability to do this particular job in a way that is not a distraction from the very important, impressing, and highly public matters at hand. But I also just want to echo everyone else's comments, like, there's a way that we address these things, there's a way we handle our disagreements, and then there's a way that we don't. And I don't think anyone here would particularly like to have somebody banging on their door and making them feel frightened, so just don't do it to other people. It's ridiculous that we're even, like, having to say that. And I, you know, I, I just hope that that matter gets resolved to the satisfaction of everybody involved.
Council Rist?
I want to say that I believe my choice of words about far-left and far-right was a poor choice of how to express my concern for, maybe the word is radicalism, or a passion that does not have a filter. I don't know what to say, except that I believe objectivity and fairness and being able to listen is what we need. I would go to war to make sure that the people that I disagree with have the right to be able to be heard in free speech, but I do not want hate or violence to be part of free speech, and that's kind of where I was coming from. So I agree with Tom and, and Councilor Coniff that maybe the choice of far-left and far-right doesn't, doesn't really state what I really mean to say. It's just that I'm a victim of social media, I guess, where those terms are quite often used and not really fairly used quite often. So I do want diverse and opinions that are not my own to be heard. That is not what I was saying, so I don't know. Perhaps I said it poorly, but that's where I'm at.
Thank you, Council Rist. Any other comments before we take the vote? Council Kuzinski?
Thank you. I appreciate everyone's comments. I appreciate all the, all the emails that I've received. I would encourage people who email in the future to please, if you can, if there's some way to leave an, an address or a number, or some way to be able to get in touch with you other than an email. It's very disconcerting to see emails that, they're just an email. I'd like to be sure that somebody who's writing, who they are, where they, that there's a phone number, if possible, to call them. Now, maybe that is a lot to ask with public record information, that anybody can ask for these, and folks reasonably might not want to have their phone number. I was a little, also, if I may, well, it's another subject. So I think that we are in a time where we have to be able to listen to varying opinions and hear them and have a healing heart and a healing nature, and that's what the kind of person I would like to see on the committee. I hope everyone agrees.
Thank you. All right, no further comments? Then I will ask Barbara to take the roll call for the vote.
Begnaud.
No.
Peake?
I'm sorry? I said no.
Okay. Salem Derby?
No.
Omar Gomez?
No.
JP Kuzinski?
No.
Bill Lynch?
No.
Tom Peake?
No.
Dan Rist?
No.
Lindsey Rothschild?
No.
Appointment is not, what's the correct word? Appointment is denied for Kathy Gray by a vote of zero to eight, I guess. Okay. Council Lynch?
Thank you, Madam President. I only have, to move new business, please. I have three appointments I'd like to move to the Appointments Committee, and I'll make a motion right now to move the mayoral appointments of Mitzi Altser to Energy Advisory Committee, term expiration 12/31/2022. Jason Montgomery to the Community Relations Committee with a term expiration 12/31/2021. Kelsey Hall to the Commission on Disability with a term expiration 12/31/2022.
Second?
We have a motion, a second, to move the three mayoral appointments just identified to the Appointment Committee. Any discussion? Barbara?
Salem Derby?
Yes.
Omar Gomez?
Aye.
JP Kuzinski?
Aye.
Bill Lynch?
Yes.
Tom Peake?
Aye.
Dan Rist?
Aye.
Lindsey Rothschild?
Aye.
Begnaud?
Aye.
Motion passes eight to zero. Council Lynch?
And our last, last thing is the meeting will be, the next meeting will be in 9:00 at 5:00 PM via Zoom, and thus concludes.
Thank you, Council Lynch. Ordinance, Council Derby?
Thank you, Madam President. Ordinance met with Planning Board last night. Unfortunately, I wasn't able to attend, but, and we also were not able to set a new meeting, so I will have to announce that at our next meeting, at our next full City Council meeting. I just wanted to give a quick update on plastic, because I was hoping to set the public hearing for that tonight. I'm going to hold off on setting the public hearing on the plastic ordinance, just because there is a question from the city attorney that we need to address in committee. So as soon as we get a committee meeting together, we will address that and we'll bring it back. And I don't think I have any housekeeping, so that concludes.
Great, thank you, Council Derby. Property, I believe, Council Rothschild, you're going to give the report tonight.
Yes, thank you. So the only thing we have to talk about tonight is the resolution we have for the discontinuance of Standish Street as a public way in East Hampton. Do I need to give any context for that, or?
Why don't you just give a quick summary of?
Okay. So, so there's a, there is, the Planning Board conditioned a special permit approval for the construction of two new duplexes on Colonial Drive, and that necessitated the discontinuance of Standish Street, which actually never existed. So it was, it was made a public way at a meeting in 1913, but it was actually never made or constructed. So this is, so now we have to, it's never been developed or used as a public way, and the Planning Board has, and the DPW has no intention of developing it. So we just need to officially have a resolution to discontinue Standish Street as a public way in East Hampton.
Okay, if you want to go ahead and read that, and then?
Read the resolution? Okay. A resolution to discontinue Standish Street as a public way in East Hampton, Massachusetts, whereas the town of East Hampton voted to accept Standish Street as a public way per Article 86 of the Town Meeting Vote dated March 10, 1913, and whereas Standish Street never, has never been developed or used in a public way, and whereas pursuant to MGL C-8221, the City Council possesses the authority to discontinue public ways in the city of East Hampton, Massachusetts, and whereas the discontinuance of Standish Street has been referred to the Planning Board as required by MGL 41811, and the Planning Board has lodged no objection to the discontinuance of Standish Street with the City Council, and whereas the City Council has determined that there's no benefit or interest in continuing Standish Street as a public way, and that it is the city's interest to discontinue Standish Street. Now therefore, be it resolved that Standish Street, a public way per Article 86 of the Town Meeting Vote dated March 10, 1913, is hereby discontinued, two, that the city's rights in Standish are abandoned, and three, that this resolution shall take effect upon passage.
Second?
We'll consider that a motion?
Okay. So move.
Second?
We have a motion, a second, to discontinue Standish Street. Any further discussion? All right, Barbara?
Omar Gomez?
Aye.
JP Kuzinski?
Yes.
Bill Lynch?
Yes.
Tom Peake?
Aye.
Dan Rist?
Yes.
Lindsey Rothschild?
Yes.
Begnaud?
Aye.
Salem Derby?
Aye.
Motion passes eight to zero, the discontinuance of Standish Street. And Council Rothschild, what else? Do you have a?
Thus concludes.
You have no, you have no meeting date set?
I don't think we do, do we, JP? No.
Okay.
No, so thus concludes.
Thank you. Rules and Government Relations, Council Peake?
Thank you, Madam President. We have, we met last week, and we got a lot done, so I'd like to just sort of work through this. I'll start with the Administrative Code 20-2 for the Cultural Council. Basically, and, Mayor, correct me if I get any of this wrong, but right now, there is a group in East Hampton that functions like a typical municipal cultural council that, for some reason through the past, is currently called the ECA Grants Subcommittee, but because it functions under the same MGL as all the other cultural councils, and the thought was that renaming it the East Hampton Cultural Council would sort of make it more clear to other members of the community and to outside entities they might be interacting with, what the actual scope and responsibilities of this group is. So the Administrative Code 20-2, basically just, that's all it does, is just change the name to East Hampton Cultural Council.
Yes.
This was approved by the Rules and Government Relations Committee, 320. So at this point, I would like to, do I need to read the whole thing? Because I think I'd have to look it up, or can I just move to accept it?
No. Mom, you need to schedule a public hearing.
Oh, that's right, because it's a?
An administrative code.
An administrative code, right. So then I'd like to schedule a public hearing. Why do I keep getting jammed up on that? That's like one thing, yeah, okay. So, yes, I, I'd like to schedule a public hearing. Would anyone object to doing it at our next meeting? I know that there's a couple other things, but this should be really fast. So that would be Wednesday, the 2nd?
Yep.
Okay. So I'm going to make a motion to schedule a public hearing for Administrative Code 20-2, the Cultural Council, for Wednesday, September 2nd at 6:15?
Second.
Motion is second to set a public hearing for Administrative Code 20-2 at September 2nd, 2020. Any discussion? Barbara?
Begnaud?
Yes.
Salem Derby?
Yes.
Omar Gomez?
Aye.
JP Kuzinski?
Aye.
Bill Lynch?
Yes.
Tom Peake? Tom Peak?
Aye.
Dan Rist?
Aye.
Lindsey Rothschild?
Aye.
Motion passes eight to zero. Counsel Peak?
Okay, the exciting thing is we also finally worked through the the draft document for the Charter Review. It does look like that expires on the 3rd, and I was, we were thinking of setting a public hearing for that for that be the 16th of September, the second meeting, just to sort of give it some time that's not conflicting with a bunch of other public hearings, because it's gonna be a big thing. So do I need to first request an extension and then set a public hearing?
I don't think it matters, Tom, you can
Or can I just schedule the public hearing?
But you have to extend it as well. Or you can wait until September to extend it, I suppose.
No, we might as well just do it now, right? Okay, so I'll first request a 30-day extension on the Charter Review Draft Document.
Second?
Motion is second to extend the draft document 30 days. Any discussion? Barbara?
Salem Derby?
Yes.
Omar Gomez?
Aye.
JP Kuzinski?
Aye.
Bill Lynch?
Yes.
Tom Peak?
Aye.
Dan Rist?
Aye.
Lindsey Rothschild?
Aye.
Peg Coniff?
Aye.
Motion passes.
And now I will motion to set a public hearing for our second meeting in September, so that's Wednesday, September 16 at 9:15.
6:15.
Second?
Motion is second to set a public hearing for the Charter Draft Review Document on September 16, that's 6:15, for those of you who were gonna show up at 9:15. Any further discussion? Okay, Barbara?
Okay, I just want to clarify. I think, I think that for my purposes, as well as everybody else, this whole draft document should be reset, just so we all are working on the same thing.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
I also don't think, I think this public hearing is just, it's, it's nothing I have to advertise. It's just for purposes of holding public hearing for input. Is that correct?
Correct.
I think so. Yeah, I don't really know about, I mean, what it effectively is a legislative petition.
Right.
So I don't know what the rules are around that.
But I definitely think that whatever you're working on needs to be reset, because there's been so many different versions that I have no clue what you're looking at.
It'll be up this week, tomorrow or Friday.
Okay, all right. Omar Gomez?
Aye.
JP Kuzinski?
Aye.
Bill Lynch?
Yes.
Tom Peak?
Aye.
Dan Rist?
Aye.
Lindsey Rothschild?
Aye.
Peg Coniff?
Aye.
Salem Derby?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Okay, one more motion. We also discussed the Charter Review Committee and what should be done about that. The feeling from Rules was that any, well, particularly because we're at this point sending this document out, and that will, due to the nature of the legislature, probably take a a very long time to work its way through. You know, the legislature is like, not gonna be touching anything but the budget until at least January, and then who knows how that plays out from there, that we should probably at least not do anything with a Charter Review Committee until these changes have been approved to our, like, until this act passes. Also, we wanted to be cognizant of the fact that there's gonna be, you know, strains on legal resources with the Ordinance Review Committee that we are gonna be discussing. You know, if there was individual changes that we wanted to make to the Charter, I'll just remind people that the Council can do a legislative petition to amend the Charter at any time. So if there was like a really specific thing that some counselor or some member of the community wanted to see, that they wanted to work through in a Charter Review Committee, this does not preclude us from potentially touching that, but just in terms of just process, we felt that that was good. And the feeling from the city solicitor was that this last Charter Review, which then sort of dragged into this year with this current review, does satisfy the requirement of the Charter for doing this periodically. So there's no requirement for us to do it, and so the feeling was that we maybe should hold off on that. And the committee voted three to zero to dismiss this item without prejudice. And so at this time, I will make a motion to dismiss the Charter Review Committee discussion without prejudice.
Second?
Motion is second to remove the Charter Review Committee from the agenda without prejudice. Any discussion? Barbara?
JP Kuzinski?
Aye.
Bill Lynch?
Yes.
Tom Peak?
Aye.
Dan Rist?
Aye.
Lindsey Rothschild?
Aye.
Peg Coniff?
Aye.
Salem Derby?
Aye.
Omar Gomez?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Great. Our next meeting is gonna be Thursday, the 27th at 5:30. Just to sort of give a sense of where we are, what we're sort of, I'm sort of hoping that we can clear our plate of a few of the remaining items before we really dive into talking about ordinance review. So next meeting, we definitely want to discuss the request from, the request for .gov emails for city committee chairs. And we also want to at least have sort of a conversation about how we want to handle sort of just the community involvement aspect in the hearings around the proposal, the resolution proposal for a payment in lieu of taxes. So I think those are the two items we're going to try to address as best we can at the next meeting, with the idea being that if we have some sense of where we want to go from there, after that, we can then, at our meeting after that, turn to ordinance review. And I think that's all I have, so thus concludes, or Counsel Rist?
Counsel Lynch?
A couple things. One is the counselors involved, Counsel Lynch, I believe, the payment in lieu of taxes, and I forget who put in for the city committee chairs. We do ask that you attend, because those discussions should center on the counselors that did add those. Secondly, I wanted to talk a little bit about the Charter Review Draft Document, which Tom will put forward this week. Barbara, is it possible to get that up on the website as well? Because it's a constitution and the public needs to see it. How do we do that, I'm wondering?
Well, I hate to interrupt, but you know I love to interrupt. I would ask the mayor if we can utilize Ashley to maybe get a link on the landing page for the Charter Review, the Charter document that is under review, if we, if it's possible to get a link set up on the landing page?
You can send the document to Lindsey, and she can put it right up there. You know, so we can get up there as soon as the document, and then also get it on the city face, a link to that on the city Facebook page. So people, there are a couple of different ways that people can link to it, absolutely.
Great, thank you.
I think that would be fabulous, because this is a very important document, and I hope all the counselors will study the changes. We hope we have made the format easier. And I do want to thank the Rules Committee, especially for looking at it. And another shout out to the Charter Review Committee, which concluded their work last September, and we're finally getting the document to the Council and then hopefully to the Legislature. And I appreciate all their efforts. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Counsel Peak, have we set up another meeting, or is that a TBD?
Yes, we had a meeting set for Thursday, the 27th at 5:30.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, the only remaining business is if there's anything new with Rank Choice Voting Committee, I can tell everyone that Senior Tax Workoff Committee will meet tomorrow at 6 o'clock. There's nothing new since last month, or since the last time I reported. But Tom, I don't know if there's anything new with Rank Choice voting.
No, the meeting had to be rescheduled, so there's been no development since our last meeting.
Okay. We've done old business, new business, and all in between. I will take a motion to adjourn.
A motion to adjourn?
Second?
Motion is second, Barbara?
Bill Lynch? Okay.
Aye.
Already adjourned.
Yeah, Tom Peak?
Aye.
Dan Rist?
Aye.
Lindsey Rothschild?
Aye.
Peg Coniff?
Aye.
Salem Derby?
Aye.
Omar Gomez?
Aye.
JP Kuzinski?
Yes.
Motion passes, meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone. Have a wonderful evening. We'll see you next.
Take care.
You be safe.
Bye.